I'm Dan Miller from Potestin Associates. And I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee.
I'm Libby Dur from First Energy. And we are here interviewing candidates for the upcoming Morgantown City Council elections.
Prior to that, we surveyed the membership of the chamber to determine what's the most important issues in this area. And we're going to ask the most important questions to the city council candidates.
We encourage all of you to study the interviews to help you make the most important, the most informed decision that you can when you go out and vote.
So go to the Morgantown Chamber website and enjoy the show. The chamber has surveyed our membership and asked for a ranking of the regional problems that need to be addressed by our elected officials. The number one ranked problem in this survey was not surprisingly, roads and transportation. We have a few questions for the various candidates in the Morgantown City Council. And we will, before we do that, we will ask for about a one-minute bio. We have with us today Mayor Bill Kueke, and he will give us a little bit about his background, and then we'll get into the four or five questions. Mayor Bill, go ahead.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. I am the mayor of Morgantown. I am the second ward representative. This is completing my third term on council. I came to Morgantown, and I've said this dozens of times, I came to Morgantown for a year, and that was 48 years ago. So I came and not expected to stay, came for a job, but raised the family, fell in love with the community, really feel good about the community. And now that I'm retired, had the opportunity to run for council, and finally, after six years, I think I'm finally getting the hang of it. So anyhow, I'm up for reelection again, and that's why I'm here.
Very good. Our first question is, traffic's a real problem in Morgantown, and most of the people feel this must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? And there is much talk of additional roundabouts. Are there any other solutions?
It's not easily solved. Part of our difficulty is, and as a city, we've actually done good things in terms of traffic. When I say good things, I mean, we've taken care of our roads. Our roads are in better shape than DOH's roads, unfortunately. And the DOH is part of the problem in that a lot of the roads that you're having difficulty with are their responsibility. We're working with them. We're getting better cooperation. There's a Beachhurst bypass, or Beach, not bypass, Beachhurst Plan that has already been selected, instituted, studied, and it addresses a lot of the problems that could really make a difference. There are other activities occurring throughout, including in the Saverton Roundabout, the idea of upgrades to Green Bag Road. Again, these are all things that the city, I in particular, the MMPO have been working on. Allen has been working on this too. These are all things that are known and are in process, but these are not quick and easy solutions. And the city, other than advocating and complaining and hollering for them, it's kind of at the mercy of other people.
Yeah, that's right. With the DOH in control of most of our roads, it's hard for city council to resolve the solution besides doing the communication that you mentioned.
But we are, and that's the truth of the matter. And we're making progress. I mean, we've got their attention. We're sitting at the table. They are talking with us. That's encouraging. Now, immediate solutions, whether you're talking about the idea of better access to Long Beachhurst, whether we should be talking about Campus Drive and another turning lane there, these are all things that are in works, the plan's there. The problem is, even if you were to get cooperation, I can't tell you many things that we've had in place where we've actually had the money available to us and had to go ahead, ready to go, and then had to wait a period of years for this even to begin. It's frustrating.
Yes.
And I share that frustration with all of our community. I really do.
The whole county.
Yeah.
So outside the roads, second question is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Well, that's difficult too. It depends on what you're looking for and what you're trying to do. If you're talking about downtown and how to address a vibrant downtown, infrastructure, you know, we need a way of incentivizing businesses downtown. We need a way of making the community more inviting. We need a way of promoting the economic viability of downtown. You know, and that's with the activities that we provide, for example. There was a concept there to the idea of live, work, play. What you want to do is build a community where you have a clientele for the downtown within proximity of downtown. You want to create a walkable community. I mean, these are all infrastructure possibilities that we're looking at, we're working on currently. I'm sorry, I'm getting excited about this, but we are making progress. The idea of this pedestrian study that we're doing now that Alta, a firm that we brought in to do the study, that's very encouraging. Now, that deals not only with pedestrians, but it deals with biking, that also deals with traffic. It gives us a plan forward as to how we might progress. When we talk about things, even making the city more livable, the idea of, for example, sidewalks, how do you go about doing that? What do you do? Is it the responsibility of the homeowner? Does the city take it on? That can be crushing. That can be, this has been something that's been debated for a long period of time. But with this study, what we can identify is corridors that are most frequently used. Then perhaps that's the thing that the city really enters into. And then we work out another plan, perhaps cooperative, throughout our neighborhoods to make this a better place to work and live and play. We want to make it an inviting place. We need to approach this in some sort of logical manner. We're doing what we can do to incentivize. We've created TIF areas that stretch not only, well, there are five of them, I think. I shouldn't say that we think, but there are areas there that we offer infrastructure improvements that will actually increase, you know, the buildability of the community and make it a better place. Does that answer your question? You want to be more specific as to why?
That's good.
Okay. There are, I can't tell you, there's an awful lot of promise on the horizon, and there are a lot of good things that have the potential of happening. The difficulty is just making them advantageous to happen. In other words, giving the incentives, the proper incentives, without giving away the store, but giving the incentives to make these things occur. We tried to do that downtown recently when we offered the tax break for over the $5 million threshold of building down there. We're working with the idea of the opportunity zones now that we've gotten three of them that have a good potential for us too. Our TIFs have been successful, and some of them maybe not as active as we'd like to see. We need to find a way of pushing those forward too.
Thank you. With respect to future business stability within the north central West Virginia competitive markets, the major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. The stability of government revenues, spending, and future obligations are all important aspects of establishing that predictability. When evaluating those risks, different aspects are examined. Here are a look at only two. Unfunded liabilities in a shrinking population, unfunded liabilities in a shrinking competitive environment. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, in 1970, Morgantown's percent of population to Montagnaya County population peaked at 46.1%, which was 29,431 to 63,714. Since that time, Morgantown's population as a percentage of county population has dropped steadily, where the 2010 census reported a 30.8% ratio. And finally, with a 29%, which was 30,547 to 105,030 in the 2017 U.S. Census estimate today. Our questions are, what is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
An easy question. Thank you. Well, first of all, when you say the ratio is changing, yeah, it is. It's because we're growing, you know, and we're growing on the outer edges, much better than has ever been in the past. Take a look at the progress west, you know, in Westover, Granville, that kind of circumstance. So that's understandable. We've been relatively consistent in terms of our BNO. We're actually doing better. It's increasing. The fluctuation we get with BNO is primarily with building BNO. That varies depending on how much activity that we have within the city itself. The unfunded liabilities, the idea of, we're looking to address that. We're fortunate in our last budget, and I'll give some credit to our administration, to our city manager. He's presented us with a two-year budget. We have this year's budget, which is, I think, a very good budget. If you look at it online, I don't think there's anybody out there going to be arguing with us about where we're putting our monies. He's gone on further to say in the next year, the 2020, what we might be looking at and ways that we might be approaching these kinds of difficulties, the unfunded liabilities, the pension. We are looking, and perhaps that's on your next question, I don't know, we are looking at other sources of revenue. Unfortunately, if you want the services, there has to be some way of getting those services. You have to pay for them. I'm looking to see what is the least obtrusive. The BNO tax is, everybody complains about, and rightfully so, it's on gross, it's not on net. We all know that. You know, even to some degree, the idea of what we have to deal with, service fee, as good as that's been for us in terms of providing officers, police officers, and providing road repair, as good as that's been. The problem is that there's a group of people at the lower end of the scale that it really affects much more than the rest of the population. And that's a little on the unfair side also. These are tools that we've been given by the state. I mean, we have very little flexibility in the way we can approach these. We need to work with the tools that we have. Fortunately, one of the tools that's been presented through Home Rule and proven successful in other cities, because we didn't jump into it right away. We were cautious. We are cautious. We're still looking at it. That's the sales tax. And the sales tax can be, and has been suggested at least to us initially, the thought is that we would use it to, partially for the, to get the unfunded problems out of the way, some of the things that we have with the pension fund, for example. And also to identify some of this to go towards our boat park and our boat park situations. We have a very aging, aging stock that we need to somehow rejuvenate. And again, it's again, a matter of sense of place, making a community that people want to be here. And the more people we have here, the more participation we have, the more people we have contributing, the better off the city is. That's the approach. Is there something that I can enlarge on there? Is there other things that I've not answered? What can I say?
I think that was very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Our next question, question number four. What actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax? Why or why not? Do you believe it will harm businesses in the city?
I'll answer the last part of that first. No, I don't think it's going to harm people in the city. Even when it was first proposed, I think that when we were looking at the idea of doing Home Rule, because we weren't first to the gate on that one, I went and was talking with people in Huntington, for example, and asked what their feeling was, because Huntington almost immediately did that, 1% sales tax. It didn't bode well for that administration that put it through. I think they didn't do well in the reelection. However, it was long enough after that I could talk to some of the businesses too. It was almost unnoticed as far as they were concerned. The ones that were most concerned about it were the big-ticket items, and that was the jewelry store and what have you. They were afraid they couldn't be competitive. Again, I don't think that 1% is going to be noticeable, and it's generally done by people who can, if you're buying something, you can probably afford what you're looking at, and 1% is not going to make a big difference. It does make a big difference in terms of what you get from it. If we can pay off our pension, if we can get a better boat park, if we can do that kind of thing, then it's worth considering. And I don't think that that's a big driver. You don't go and say, I'm going to shop at a place where I can save 1%. That's not generally the deciding factor of where you're going. We need to provide the services that people want. We need to attract the services that people will use. That's really what we need to do. We need a more vital, more vigorous community downtown, Saverton, and who knows where else, because we are really looking at the possibility of doing some annexation. And that's reasonable. We're a growing city. We need to take into consideration what that growth is and what it should be.
Okay. Thank you. In closing, do you have a personal passion that you would like to share relative to city council?
I don't know what you would consider a passion. I guess my passion has been, in my complaint in the past, has been that we had frequently painted ourselves into a corner, that we hadn't really done sufficient planning, that we were more reactive than we were in terms of being proactive. My passion is to see what the possibilities are, try to get a broad range of input. In other words, this shouldn't be dominated. You need to provoke the conversation. You can't have one section dominated, because they have their perspective, and they may be absolutely perfectly correct from their point of view, but it may serve their purpose and not the broader community. The more you can include people in the conversation, the more you can listen to people, the more you can get that kind of total cooperation, the better your solution's going to be. If there's a passion that I have, it's for the idea of provoking the conversation and doing the planning and working towards a future that we all can benefit from.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Well, very good. Thank you. This has been a pleasure.
Okay, we're here with Rachel Fetti. She's running as a candidate in the first ward for the city council, and we've got four or five questions for you, Rachel.
Great.
However, we'll give you about a minute just to talk a little bit about your background.
So I spent most of my growing up years in Nebraska, deep in the Midwest. Very recently, in the, near the town where I grew up, they found the magic fridge. That was that fridge that was freed during the flooding, that was full of beer, and that was still cold. And the town has one, I think, one business, and it is the, I think it's the Nothing Special Steakhouse and Saloon. So that's where I'm from, and a little farm there where I have five brothers and sisters, and we had lots of goats and critters. And so when my husband was deciding where to move to go to dental school, West Virginia with that, you know, sort of a land-based ethos and hard-working people seemed like the right place to go. I did not want to end up in Phoenix. So this was where we came, because the pictures were pretty, and I wanted to live here.
Well, great. Welcome to the Malton State.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I've been here for 11 years now.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, and we've raised our kids here. And my husband is very, and I are both really committed to raising our kids here, because it's a great place to raise children. There are some wonderful committed parents and great schools, and we've been lucky to call this place home.
Tell us about your kids.
Okay, I have a 13-year-old and a 15-year-old, and I don't want to go there, because I'm going to get in trouble. My 13-year-old and I are just, you know, he's a 13-year-old boy, and we're wrangling. We're wrangling all day long.
That's good. Okay, we've got, we'll start out with the first question. We surveyed our membership here in the chamber and asked for a ranking of the regional problems that need to be addressed by our elected officials. And the number one ranked problem was roads and transportation. So the first question is, traffic's a real problem in Morgantown, as everyone knows, and most folks feel it must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? There's much talk of additional roundabouts. Are there any other solutions?
So that's a huge, multi-part question, and the whole state is stymied about that issue right now. But I think that the state could learn something from Morgantown. We had, you know, what people in my family call a come-to-Jesus moment, where it was just decided that roads were our biggest priority, and whatever it cost, we had to come up with the money to fix them. And the solution that the city found or decided to implement is not an ideal solution, and it's not a perfect solution. The safe streets fee is problematic for some reasons. However, we have been able to make consistent progress in addressing the problems with our streets, because there was not going to be a solution coming from the state, there was not going to be a solution coming from the county. We simply had to address it. Now, we're struggling in this state because folks have, they've been convinced that we need to invest in our roads and in our infrastructure, and that taxes have to be raised. So we, or taxes or other funds have to be raised through other means. And of course, we had the giant road bond, you know, that we all voted for and that we were enthusiastic about. But as we can see from the discussion in Charleston, that is not going to be a complete solution, because those funds are going to new construction and new infrastructure. We simply cannot function. Right now, Morgantown is being essentially strangled by its state roads, the state roads that run through Morgantown and the state roads that surround us. It is pothole hell. I've been told by some folks from the Middle East that we have worse roads than they have in parts of Lebanon. So there's, that I think is a sign that we've undercommitted our resources to a critical, critical need. And unfortunately, from the city's end, what we can do is we can support state efforts. We can do what they asked us to do the last time they asked us for funding, which is to go to bat every time we can to support state road funding. But the other thing that we're doing is working with our regional representatives to try to get more representation in Charleston. As you know, there's been a huge discussion about how road funding is allocated. We know that the percentages of, the percentage of the budget that's sent to our region is not appropriate. It's not based on the funding formula, and it's not based on our growth, and it's not based on our need. We have to have the funding formula applied appropriately, and we have to have it applied consistently. The other thing that is raised in this question is a complicated one about how much, say, we have over state roads in Morgantown. These roundabouts that we see are not created by folks in Morgantown. It's not, they're not created by the city government. They're not recommended by city engineering. Those are being created by folks from Charleston. And so what I would encourage everyone to do, in fact, I will beg everyone to please go check out bikewalkmorgantown.com. Now, this will take you to the MMPO site, and those are the folks who collaborate together to come up with a transportation plan for our entire area, that greater Morgantown, Montagnaya County metro area. They worked together with the folks in Charleston to come up with these plans. They send out engineering. They are the ones who decide that a roundabout is less expensive than installing a traffic, traffic intersections. And so they are currently doing a survey, and they have maps that are available, so you can look on that website. It's bikewalkmorgantown.com again. You can look on that website and see where we're at, and you can complete a survey about where you think we should go. We have to have that feedback from our area. And I just urge your members to do the survey themselves, encourage the employees to take a look at them, because we are in a bind where we are not sending enough information about our needs to Charleston, and we're not making those needs known. And we just have to participate more actively in public communications about these needs.
Okay. Bikewalkmorgantown.com.
Yep.
Do you know until what date that is available to be filled in?
Let's just say tomorrow.
Okay.
That way, we'll get it in in time.
Okay, our second question is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Well, roads, roads, roads. And then, of course, one thing that I always try to keep in mind is our employee infrastructure, our staffing capacity, our ability to attract people who are educated and to keep them here, our ability to make peace with the folks that we attract here. You know, I think sometimes in West Virginia, folks struggle because they're frustrated because it seems like folks come from out of state. But then if you're upset with those folks who came from out of state because they love you so much, you're going to have a little bit of a problem. We want to attract those people. We want to call them out, and we want to say stay. We want to make them feel welcome. And it's, I think that the education bill that was just signed by the governor will help. That bill will provide an opportunity for young people to go to college and to stay, hopefully for a good period of time. I myself, I have a GED, and I attended community college before going to a state school and going to law school. I believe very, very strongly that you can come from a challenging background, you can take advantage of these wonderful and sometimes better educational opportunities at a local level, and you can go on to lead the kind of life you dream about. I'm a big believer in that. And I'm hopeful that that will nurture our young people. And then, of course, when we're talking about human infrastructure, sobriety and dealing with our drug epidemic, we have got to deal with that. And I know those are not typically things that are considered in an infrastructure question, but to me, those are right now the most important things, because you can fix a road if you've got people who can work on them. You can fix a building if you've got people who can work on them. If you don't have sober, focused, capable people to take these jobs, then we're going to keep struggling the way we are.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on.
We're going to move on to future business stability within the north-central West Virginia competitive markets. Question number three. What is your working knowledge of the business and occupational general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's 92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
Well, that's an exciting question. I know BNO taxes is a, is a painful subject in the state of West Virginia. I pay them myself and I, it's a real challenge to pay on your gross. It is just a real difficulty. Unfortunately, we are, we're a bit like, we're a bit like an addict. You know, we're addicted to those revenues. It's about $14 million in the budget. And even the solutions that are offered are not necessarily going to get us out of a hole that we've really dug ourselves into. I've been on city council for two years. And when I came on to council, it's a, it was a sobering, you know, we, we had talked about the budget during the campaign. We talked about the needs of our community. And we had a lot of real sobering challenges to face. We had not increased our fire department since 1973. We did not have enough money to fund the needs of our police department. We did not have enough money to, to pay our employees to keep them and to keep them working. We did not have enough money for staff. Today, we're in the position to say we have increased the numbers in our fire department. We have increased the numbers in our police department. We have addressed those safety issues. But of course, the pension issues are the big bull in the room. At this point, even if we implement a 1% sales tax, that will not offset, that will not be enough to offset BNO tax. It simply will not. We have responded to the emergencies in our city. We have responded to the worst problems that we have. I know that the, I cannot say enough about our city manager who has done us the favor of planning out our budget two years in advance to give us some general idea about how any additional revenue could be spent if we do pass a 1% sales tax. My understanding of our current budgetary contribution is, I think this year, we're projected to put in $1.9 million into the pension fund. It's projected that that number will increase by 1.25 million if we do institute the 1% sales tax. A lot of folks are talking about the 1% sales tax as a panacea for the problems that we're facing. Some folks are suggesting that we dedicate 50% of it to Bow Park. But the reality is that if we pass a 1% sales tax, we are going to have to direct a substantial portion of those funds to the pensions. There are fire pensions and our police pensions. And you cannot, you cannot let those go by the wayside. The fact that we're in the hole so deeply is, is the result of planning problems. And it's the result of what I think is a really challenging political environment. Where when you, where we are on a two-year election cycle, folks are very rarely willing to commit to a tax increase on a two-year election cycle. It's just very, very difficult. But we have to take some hard steps in the right direction to fix this problem. Because we cannot let our policemen and our firefighters and our retirees down. My understanding of how the, and the 2020, 2019, 2020 budget is available, if folks are interested in taking a look at it, to see how those numbers have been sort of projected by our city manager. The 2020 budget is of course not set in stone. It's not been passed and has not been submitted to the state. We are only, we've only passed the 2019 budget, but the 2020 numbers give us a sense of what will happen if there's a 1% sales increase, uh, sales tax increase. It is projected that a portion of those funds would go to Bow Park because just as infrastructure in every other part of our city has declined, so infrastructure in Bow Park has declined. We have many folks who are driving down to Clarksburg and driving to Fairmont and driving hither and thither to take their kids to programming or to take them to activities. We need to focus on recreation in our community as an opportunity to protect our kids, to keep them safe, to give them opportunities to avoid potential addictive behaviors and to think of it as a long-term investment in our kids. And so I think the 2020 budget projects a 25% contribution of any 1% sales tax to Bow Park. And that is another form of infrastructure that we really need to invest in, both for tourism and for the protection and safety of our kids.
Thank you. Our next question does address the 1% sales tax. But the number four is, what actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? And do you believe that the 1% sales tax will harm businesses in the city? And if you could be specific, thank you.
I, of all of the reasons not to pass a 1% sales tax, this is the main reason not to do it. It makes city businesses less competitive with businesses outside the city. And it's a painful thing to feel as if Morgantown, which contains so much of the heart of our area, is in competition with new development TIFs that have been brought in from the southern part of the state that are, are funding, you know, these roundabouts and highways and ways to get to commercial areas, but don't necessarily benefit residential areas, for example. It's a painful thing to feel as if we're competing with those areas. But the reality is that we are. We compete when we ask for BNO taxes. We compete if we decide that we're going to pass a 1% sales tax. The question is, can we follow in the county's footsteps and refuse to plan for the future? Can we do that? Can we say, we're not going to pass the 1% sales tax? We're just going to let our pensions go by the wayside? Can we say, we, we're not going to pass the 1% sales tax? We're going to let our parks crumble? Can we say, we're going to cut BNO taxes and be unable to pay for one of the best police departments anywhere? Anywhere, in any state in our country? Can we do that? Ethically, I don't think we can. I don't think we can say that we're protecting our businesses. I don't think we can say we're protecting our residents. I don't think we can say we're protecting our citizens. If I go down south, if I go to Grafton or I go to Philippi where I work and I represent kids who are victims of domestic violence and victims of child abuse. If I go there and I see what they have, which is nearly nothing, and I watch their kids and their parents struggle with nightmarish problems that we are only just struggling with now because we have a police department that functions and we have enough funding in our community. I would never choose to go there. I would never send Morgantown to that spot. I just have to ask, why would we send Mon County there? Why would we refuse to invest enough in our county? Why would we put the city in the position of competing with the county? And that's, that I think is the real question that needs to be asked. Because I would not refuse to follow what I think is, is a politically-charged problem. Anytime you pass a tax, it's a problem. But will I bite the bullet and do it to save my city and to take care of my pensioners? Yes, I will. Will I be re-elected? Who knows? Probably not. But I'm still going to do it. And it's just, I hope that we can work more with the county. I hope we can work more with our state. Because for what we contribute, for what we are, what we are contributing to both the state and the county, we are not getting the credit that we deserve. Every person in Morgantown who pays taxes pays taxes twice. We do more for the county. We do more for the state than probably any other town, any other town around. We should get credit for that. And I, I hope we see the benefit of it. But believe it or not, we do see the benefit of it. And we see it in our kids. We see it in our streets. We see it in our community. And I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of what the city's accomplished in the past several years. I'm proud of the hard decisions that they've made. I'm proud to be a part of it. And I, I think we should all, you know, take a little bit of extra time and stretch and pat ourselves on the back.
Thank you. Rachel, we do have one final question. Do you have a personal passion that you would like to share relative to city council?
I have all kinds of personal passions, but my two primary passions are housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, which is another form of infrastructure that we're desperately in need of, and grappling with our, our drug and alcohol issues. That, both of those things tie into volunteer work that I do outside of the city and outside of my work on city council. Both of those issues tie into really my personal experiences. You know, like every, like most folks in West Virginia, I have a family member or several with either a prescription drug addiction or with a street addiction or an addiction to street drugs or alcohol. I have done that gritty work of raising someone else's child because of a drug addiction. I have done that gritty work of hauling family members into emergency rooms, trying to get them a spot in rehab. And I have done the gritty work of watching them fail. And I know daily that in my work in life, that, that we have, we have to spread and share the possibility that a, that a, that each one of us is valuable and matters. Your mind matters, your family matters, your future matters. We have got to be clear that investing in each of our futures requires that we have all of our wits about us. And those are my passions. Those are the things that I work on all the time. And I hope I get to continue to share both the stuff that I'm passionate about and the stuff that's a little bit of drudgery. Slogging through budgets is not the most, it's not a ho-down. I hope I get to do that for another two years.
Okay, Rachel, thank you so much for coming in and sharing. Not only responding to our questions, but sharing a little bit about some of your passions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
We are here with Ron Bain, who is a former member of city council. And we've got four to five questions for you. But before we begin, you can tell us just a little bit about your background for about a minute or so.
Okay, I, I was on council for 16 years. I've been a member of the MUB board for eight years. Been on the Transit Authority about the same amount of time. Still serve on those, even though I'm not on council anymore. I served on council until 2017 and then I was, I was beat. And then just thought I'd get back in this and, you know, I'm long, I, I grew up here, lived here all my life. My background in education is I have a PhD in safety engineering. I have an MBA and also I have a master's in safety studies. So I have a little bit of background there. So, and now I currently work at the university and I work with some students at the mountain there.
Very good. So you probably have a safe household.
I, I think so. Better be.
Just so you know, the chamber surveyed the membership here in the Morgantown area and asked for a ranking of the regional problems that need to be addressed by our elected officials. And the number one ranked problem was, not surprisingly, roads and transportation. So our first question is, traffic is a problem in Morgantown and most folks feel this must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? And there is some talk about additional roundabouts. Are there other solutions?
Well, right now I'm on the Transit Authority and we were very pleased that the last time we passed a levy for the Transit Authority, we've upped our time, so now we have pickups every 30 minutes in certain situations. We did have a setback because we, we were asked to move from the city of Morgantown and we had to move over to Westover because they wanted us to move. And that was council and they were doing renovations at the Ruby McQuade Park. But we must continue to make sure that the public transit is in the forefront. Because as we go through this, there are, there's a, there's a community of people that I think that we could still get to use the lines and it would help with traffic. It has helped with the students. The students use those so much. I mean, it, without the mountain line, we would still have a huge traffic problem here. That's one thing. I think the other thing is, is that the cooperative effort, you know, with the revamping of the DOH, we need to work with them to understand that we can do cooperative efforts on some of the crossover streets. For instance, half of downtown Morgantown are state routes. Why is it that we can't work with them and say, listen, we can take some of that burden from you, but we need to have some, some, and we could be the for, forerunners or the frontrunners on this and say to the other people, other cities in the state, let's work with the DOH and say, what's the problem with us using some of our road funds to fix some of those things in some sort of reimbursement situation? Because now they're talking about hiring outside contractors. Well, if we can do it as a municipality, then we're the outside contractor. Let us do it, let us fix it. It's faster, it's more efficient. We know what our problems are. And it would help commerce downtown because I tell you, some of the roadways, people just don't like to ride on. They just don't and they avoid it. So that's what I would say, well, cooperative effort and move to those partnerships.
Very good. The second question is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Well, you know, Morgantown, if you're talking about just specifically Morgantown, we, we're at a disadvantage. We're kind of landlocked now because we're surrounded by development. This is something I mentioned five, six years ago when I was on council, that we're going to become the donut hole if we don't start making ourselves attractive in the downtown area. We, the only growth areas that we have right now are Saverton, which is close to the interstate. We have an opportunity up at the, up by Ramada Inn because that's right along a quarter. We already have Walmart in the city. But why not try to expand that and, and make developers understand that we could work with them and bring some of them in the city? The problem is, is that this annexation that they're talking about in the city is that it's sort of forced annexation. There's a difference between working as a partnership. You can do the example right now with Westover. Westover has a great relationship with those developers and they said, listen, we'll work with you. How do you want to do this? And they've just annexed all that property at Westbrook. They're going to make a ton of money. We need to have the same kind of partnership. And I think those, those avenues have not been really formulated and we have to work towards those things. But the two growth areas for me would be by the interstates, both in Saverton and, and also by the Ramada Inn. We have those, we have that option now at that point and do some more, more things up there.
Yeah, very good. Libby, you got the question three and four.
Thank you. Next we'll speak about future business stability within the north-central West Virginia competitive markets. Question number three. What is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's 92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry? Please be specific.
Well, the BNO tax, here's the thing on that. We, we've seen a decline in that in the last, well, probably six to seven years. Slow, progressive decline. Because we're not promoting those partnerships with developers, with people to bring new ideas to Morgantown, specifically Morgantown. Now, the people outside of that, Westover's doing a great job. Granville's doing a great job. That's right across from us. There's no reason why we can't be doing the same things. We've made an environment here that's very difficult for people to expand and, and do those things that they need to do. The BNO tax, I know it's declining and we're, we're in trouble there. When you look at- When you look at, oh, the $92 million. You know, when I was, I was fortunate enough to work with, and I had a city manager work for me, was Dan Boroff. And Dan, at that time, took the pension funds and actually invested them and we made great strides. When you look at our unfunded liability and you look at other cities, we're in great shape. We're probably one of the best in the state of West Virginia right now. One of the things that happened in 2000, I think it was 2011, we no longer have a defined benefit program. So now new employees that have come on, they have a 401K that they contribute to, but the defined benefit program has stopped. So that was the first part of what we had to do. So actually, every year that goes by, we, if we're hiring new people, it does lower our unfunded problems. When we get to that point, I, I would think that if, if we would invest these things the proper way and keep current with what the legislature and what rules we have that we can create more investment, I think we can get through this. It's not something we have to pay right now, but have that on the radar to say, when there are opportunities, let's invest well for those people and make sure that they're covered. That's the best answer I could give you.
Very good. Thank you. Question number four. What actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax and why or why not? Do you believe it will harm businesses in the city?
Okay, on the 1% tax, this is one thing that I would have preferred to do instead of the user fee. If we would have done that first out of the gate and said, this is what we're gonna use the 1% tax for. For instance, I'll give you an example. Fairmont, Fairmont did a 1% tax and they paid for their roads. That's what their 1% tax goes to. Yesterday I heard on the radio, which was just fabulous, Bridgeport is building a rec center for their community with their 1% tax. Well, how can, you can get people behind that $55 million facility for the community. Now, what does that do? That's a synergistic kind of thing that brings business there. That's what they did. They take their 1% and they invest it. The problem I have with this 1% tax, I don't know of anybody in this room, I can't tell you, what are they gonna do with it? It says it's going to general fund. That scares me to death. I mean, it's just like the lottery funds. You know, they said, oh, we're gonna have this lottery years ago, it's gonna go to education and roads. Well, did it go to that? No, it went to general fund. It was supposed to go to senior citizens, never went there. So this again is one of those things where, how do you get that momentum of people behind it if you can't define what you're gonna do with it? And another problem I have with this, with the user fee, it's gone up a dollar. Now people say, oh, that's no big deal. Well, if we look at what's the trend now, in 2015, this was, was passed. Now in 2019, they want to raise it to $4. That means a dollar a year. If we do the math, will the user fee be 10 bucks a week by 2025? I don't know. But if you look at what the trend is, it's there. Parkersburg in Huntington, I mean Huntington, Huntington's a perfect example. They kept on raising their user fee and at the end of the day, what are they doing? They're laying people off. So the user fee didn't help. What it does is hurt. And where it hurts is, I'll give you a perfect example, and sorry I'm gonna ramble, but I love this point. In my household, I work in the city, so I pay the user fee because I work at the layer. My son, my oldest son, lives with me, he substitute teaches, sometimes he pays it because he works inside the city with one of the schools, but he also works at Dick's so he doesn't pay it there. So sometimes he pays it, sometimes he doesn't. And my other son, my youngest son, works at McColl's over in Westover. He doesn't pay it. We all live in the same household, but it's not fairly distributed. It doesn't work. And I've tried to tell people, I've got neighbors that don't pay. They both live and work outside the city. So it's, it's one of those things, but we've got poor kids, like my kids, work part-time. They can only work 20 hours a week. They have to pay it. You know, it, it's, it was structured too fast. It didn't, it wasn't well thought and now they're gonna raise it. It's frustrating to me that we don't take our time and do this correctly and, and get that momentum of people behind it because then it passes so easily. The guy from Bridgeport was great. How, how hard was it to pass your 1%? Oh, it was great. Everybody was interested in having a rec center. And I guarantee you, that community around that rec center is gonna blow up, it's gonna have people all over the place. We're not, we don't have that. I mean, and that's, that's the shame of it all with, and when I talk about that, we don't have that specifically in Morgantown. I know the chamber here works for the whole county and the county's doing great. I mean, outside, outside of here, it's just awesome. But I look at it this way, if we don't have a healthy Morgantown, it's gonna be difficult to have a healthy Mon County. And that's where my concerns are. That's, that's why I'm sitting here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. In closing, do you have a personal passion that you would like to share relative to city council?
You know, what, what I'm basically running on is three things and it's pretty simple. It is transparency always, Morgantown united, and community first. Pretty simple. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a simple guy. Eldon knows I'm simple as all ghetto. So when you look at this, it's kind of this, you know, you build. If you were looking at a, a scale and you said you had a Y-axis and a X-axis, this way would be move, you're moving towards momentum for an ID. And this is getting stuff done. Where you want to be is here. And the way you get there is transparency is nothing but trust. We have the trust in our leadership here that's gonna get us, and that moves us up the scale. The next thing is Morgantown united. When we unite on certain subjects, whether it be developing a rec center, whether it be developing roads better and working with the DOH. But we pick these things that we can work with the chamber, we can work with other entities. I'd love to work with Star City and Westover and all those people to say, let's work as a community, we could get so much done. That's the Morgantown united part. Then it moves us up the scale more. But the thing that, the thrust of it at the top, it's gotta be community first. All those ideas have to put, be put together so that we make that the best we can possibly be for the future of this community. Not just Morgantown, not just Westover, not just Star City, but everybody. And that's why I'm sitting here. That's pretty much it.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming in and sharing your views with us.
Great.
Okay, we're here with Dave Harshberger. You're from the sixth, you're going for the sixth ward opening?
Correct.
And we've got a few questions for you, but before we get to those questions, we'll give you about a minute or so just to talk a little bit about your background.
Great, thanks. Dave Harshberger, sixth ward, and I have been a wellness professional for over 30 years and for the last 24 at WVU Medicine. And in that capacity, I help individuals, organizations in our community with strategies on how to be safe, how to be healthier, and how to maximize well-being. And I would like to take that, that lens, that thought process to city council in terms of decision-making abilities that impact policy, that help to improve the quality of life for our citizens with improving well-being at the forefront of what is that decision gonna make an impact on.
Very good. So the first question we have for you, I'll give a little preface in that the chamber surveyed the membership here in this region and asked for a ranking of the regional problems that need to be addressed by our elected officials. The number one ranked problem was roads and transportation. So the first question is, traffic's a real problem in Morgantown and most folks feel that it must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? There's much talk of additional roundabouts. Are there other solutions?
Yeah, so the roundabouts that I'm aware of, for example, the one in Saberton, as you're coming in on Route 7, turn left to go to the Green Bag Road. Currently, to turn left, you need to wait for the red light. And so we, we need to do something at that intersection in, in addressing traffic. If we could encourage trucks, large trucks, to take the Green Bag Road as opposed to going straight down 7 and then through town, that would be wonderful. So if that interchange could be configured in a way that would help to encourage truck traffic through the Green Bag Road, you know, that, that would be great. In terms of other ideas around improving traffic flow, we don't use the center lane as an outbound inbound process like we do on game day. So for example, you come down the boulevard towards town from the Coliseum, you hit technically what is an illegal section of left lane, you have to get into the right lane, then you can get back into the left lane to turn into the auto store or make your left turn up 8th Street. And then once you get down to the old stadium, it becomes two lanes continuing in through town. Why couldn't we create two lanes outbound throughout that center lane during rush hour? The end of the day, same on the beginning of the day, people going into that direction of the Coliseum from town. It would eliminate the ability to make a left turn if you're in the single lane of traffic with the two lanes going in the opposite direction. But I think that's a small sacrifice to move a lot more volume of traffic. And the same could be said coming up Easton Hill. You're in two lanes and then it merges to one lane at the top by the airport or else you have to go down Hartman Run Road. Could we not keep two lanes going across the mile ground to the roundabout? And when you come out of the roundabout, coming from the med center direction to go to Cheat Lake, you merge from two lanes to one lane. So there just seems like a lot of that, that we could, at least until we have a more permanent fix, create a middle lane that can serve both functions, doing so obviously safely. The other thought would be to better encourage active transportation. And by that I mean bikes and pedestrians. And, you know, we've had some tragedies with pedestrians and I think there are recommendations from both the pedestrian safety board and the bicycle safety board that we could implement that would help to encourage people to transport by being a pedestrian or bicyclist. And right now, it's a, it's a bit of a challenge. We have some new connectors to the rail trail. Greenmont, which is a great way for that neighborhood area of South Park to hit the rail trail and potentially use that as a connector and for transportation. The Collins Ferry Connector is going in in the next year. So there's some opportunities that I think we could tie to, to help improve active transportation.
Yeah, very good. And then the follow-up to that is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
So obviously, we need to figure out a funding mechanism for the roads and we need to be able to get, get the money from the state if they're not gonna do it so that we have control of being able to take care of the roads. And then the same could be said for sidewalks. Right now, sidewalk repair and maintenance is on the property owner. And that generally is just a financial burden hardship that the property owner cannot take on. But if we identified, and the pedestrian safety board has done this, arteries of sidewalks that can serve as connectors from neighborhoods to town, that those could be considered primary sidewalks in a better cost share divided between the city and the landowners. Because that, that's an important component of being able to move in our communities is being a safe pedestrian. And then, you know, I think of green space and we, as we grow as a city, we need to incorporate smart growth with incorporating green space into that growth so that as we grow, it's the place we want to be. And, you know, and we need to annex certain areas of the, of our area into Morgantown. We're, we're a bigger footprint than what our current city limits show and we should have some smart annexation with development so that we can control that and incorporate green space into it in our parks. You know, Bow Park, we need to, we, we deserve the best park system that we can afford and it's ailing in many ways. We've got a great rail trail system. And so I think if we can, you know, make this an attractive place and support the infrastructure like roads, sidewalks, then Morgantown continues to thrive.
Thank you so much. We're moving on to the future business stability within the north central West Virginia competitive markets. Question number three. What is your working knowledge of the business and occupational general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's 92 million plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
So in particular, and it's the 12 firefighters hired with the grant that's going away. And we need to figure out how we're gonna fund that. And so our user fee right now is police department, roads, pretty evenly split and then the leftover goes to the public works. So we almost need a separate user fee if we're gonna try and keep those 12 physicians with the fire user fee. The, the other comment would be, why do we need 12 more firefighters? Because the city of Morgantown's population has not changed much in 50 years, but the counties have. So instead of being 50% Morgantown, 50% of Mon County, we're now like 20, 25% of the population of Mon County. We're providing more services to the region in Morgantown and it's an unfair cost share. And so what can we do to create a more fair cost share? Annexation would be one way. Some type of a fee that's shared more in the county and a user fee may do that, but it may not do that because it's also hitting people that live already in the city that are working in the city and paying the user fee, who are already paying higher taxes, supporting the fire department. So, so some thoughts around maybe making that more of a county-wide share because our firefighters are our first responders in many of our accident situations. And that's not just Morgantown residents are taken care of.
All right, thank you. Question number four. What actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support the 1% sales tax? Why or why not? And do you believe it will harm businesses within the city?
So we have limited ways in which we can raise money as a city. And the sales tax would be one option, our user fee is an option. I, I think, and we need to raise some money because we need to better support our internal services and infrastructure. I don't think a 1% sale tax would drive business out of the city. I think if there was the correct marketing campaign as to why we're doing this and the need for it, I think the citizens would support it. Another idea might be the user fee changed slightly so that instead of a $3 user fee across the board, you know, some cities that have a user fee, the city residents don't pay it. It's the people that live outside of the city that drive into the city and work in the city pay it. So what if we had a user fee where it was $3 for a city resident, but $4 or $5 for a county resident that worked in the city? And then that way you start to share the cost more broadly across the citizenship that's using the services. And so I would support the 1%, but I would like to see us also maybe more creatively look at a cost share that's more equitable.
Thank you. And Dave, we do have one more question for you.
Yep.
Do you have a personal passion that you would like to share relative to city council?
Well, I'm one of the fortunate few people that my professional passion is my personal passion and that is well-being and helping people to be more healthy and improve their well-being. So my passion is being active and being outdoors and using our rail trail and doing that with friends and family. And that's a passion that I, I like to share and I get to, to live it every day in my work.
Very good. Thank you for coming in and sharing your opinions with us.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thanks.